I'll call the council to order. We just came out of executive session, but for the sake of the news of the WCAT, we're going to start from scratch. Pledge allegiance. Bob Corey, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Inghman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Calhoun. Councilwoman Christopher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Terry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sardo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Duffy.
Present.
And that's President Bob Corey.
Here.
President Beckham.
Present.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a motion to accept the minutes of the July 17 Town Council meeting.
Motion.
A motion has been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
There's one point of doubt at this meeting of record because you were here.
So two abstentions. Two abstentions also.
Yeah. So there's two abstentions because I wasn't here. The reason it went through real quick is because I put the agenda together. I don't trust him. No, I'm not. Okay, the first item on the agenda, the public agenda, is a public hearing to transfer 52,002,26 for an MVP grant match, the flooding at Ingleside Park and surrounding neighborhood. We did have a meeting prior to this that was open to the public, the Finance Committee, to consider this. I was wondering if you would just do an overview before we get into the hearing?
Sure. The town applied for a couple of MVP, trying to get a project down on Morton Street and Bank Street, and trying to get a project, file an application for a project at Ingleside Park. The town did get approval on the project for Ingleside Park, did not get approval on the project on Morton and Banks. We are concerned on the project on Morton and Banks, and we requested to ask why we did not get approved, and we have not heard back yet, but they are going to schedule a meeting with the town. In the meantime, we think one of the reasons is because we have had so much data over the past several years on Ingleside, and we are, it's still in the process of collecting data on Morton Street and Banks, and will continue to do so over the next several months and hope to reapply again. The MVP grants, from what we understand, have been approved already for next, not approved. The program has been approved, so there, hopefully, will be another round, and hopefully we will be able to take part. We did ask questions, several questions, on the Ingleside project, not the least of which being, you know, concern about potential. I mean, this is a, the beginning. This isn't a project. This is the engineering and scope of the services and everything else. But we did ask questions about potentially if something is done down at the center, what kind of an impact that might have on Ingleside Park, and all these things are going to be taken account into the, into the project. So the Finance Committee did come back, is coming back to the council, and new business or old business will be coming back to the council with a positive recommendation on this project.
Okay. Does anybody wish to be heard? Make a comment. Yes.
My name is Asuka Wines. I'm the vice chair of the Winter Board of Health, and here are my fellow members, Chairman Del Schmitz and member Susan McGuire. We just called in an emergency meeting prior to this Town Council meeting to discuss the spraying, the mosquito spraying that is scheduled for this Thursday.
Okay, this has to be just on this hearing?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
On the MVP thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under public comment, you'll be able to.
Oh, okay. I was sorry.
Okay? Anybody wish to be heard on the grant? Any comments from the council? Yes.
Well, I just wanted to mention too, because in the earlier meeting, people were asking about some of the other areas of town, like Pico and Grandview, and we asked why not those areas as well. And I guess the grant, it doesn't apply to seawalls. So that's one of the reasons why those locations weren't chosen first. And I figured that since that came up in the subcommittee, we should also.
I think that's good. And I don't think that we didn't not get approved. We didn't even, I don't believe we applied for the grants there because we were told that it would not cover, the proceeds of the project would not cover seawalls. And just for general information, the total cost of this project is just about a quarter of a million dollars, of which the town manages roughly a little over $50,000.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes?
Can we find out why state, or what the rule is for towns to not be able to put up seawalls? Private homeowners or private landowners and business owners can put up seawalls. Why can't the town put up seawalls?
In certain areas, they can. There's certain areas they can't.
Can we give a definitive answer?
Like, for instance, Pico. The Pico area, we could put seawall if we could afford it. It's a lot of money. They're going to apply other grants.
At the previous meeting, you said you couldn't put a seawall.
Certain, certain areas you can.
So you can put a seawall on Pico.
Certain areas. Depends on where it is.
And you're saying you can put a seawall.
My understanding is it is, that you can. But if it's got to be, it has to be financed, and we have to put in for a grant.
Well, I mean, you could study it with this money instead of putting it in, investing in a swamp and study and help the people at Pico.
It has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with this grant. This is a separate grant. Yes?
I think what Mr. Dowd is trying to get at is that the grant itself says they won't fund seawalls. So we can apply all we want, and they're just going to reject us. And they're saying the work that they're willing to fund will not include seawalls. So yes, we can look at it, but we, and you can do it in different places.
We sat at a meeting for six hours to try to understand what we can and can't do. One of the things they said we could do was build seawalls, and all of a sudden they're saying you can't build seawalls with this money. Why did we sit at that meeting for six hours? For coastal resiliency, and resiliency means building seawalls so that you don't get flooded, and now all of a sudden you can't build seawall?
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, Jack, you can, you can build seawalls. The permitting for them is extremely difficult. These grants don't cover seawalls because they, they want to push green infrastructure. They want to, they're pushing, you know, soft coastal resiliency. You can certainly maintain seawalls you have. You can retire seawalls you have. Getting new seawalls permitted right now is extremely difficult. It's not saying that we can't get it done, but these grants will not cover it.
I'd rather see the money, the $52,000 used to see if we can build seawalls at Pico Park.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Yes, Diane.
Hi. Diane Stansfield. Question, we have 52,000, and this project is a quarter of a million? Is that what you said?
No. One point.
It's about 200 and.
260.
200,000.
234.
209,000. It's a 25 percent match.
So we have a quarter.
I was 240. 243.
So what are we doing for the rest of it?
209.
The state pays for rest. We pay for what? So they pay 300.
Okay. All right. So we have 52,000, and that is what the state pays?
No, that's what we pay.
That's what we pay. The state pays the rest.
All right, so the state pays the rest of it?
Right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes?
I don't agree with the rate from Moore Street. Is Moore Street, Charles Street, or Beacon Street included in this at all by any chance?
No.
Because it seems like every storm that we do have, that place is, our area is literally destroyed. Do we know if in the future we're going to have any other EPW works, such as what they did on Beacon Street last year, where they redid the whole street, which was great, with sewer lines and the drainage? Just wondering if they're going to do that for Moore Street next year also?
I don't know.
Currently, they're not on the capital side.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone from the council? Having none, I'll close up here. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the auditors. Welcome.
Thank you.
Every year, we go through this whole process where we have auditors come in and check our books. So with that, I'll throw it to you.
Thank you. My name is Jim Powers from Powers &amp; Sullivan. I'm a partner on the engagement, and I'd like to thank David and all the staff and everybody else at school for providing a lot of cooperation as part of the process. I know this is a June 30, 2017 audit. A lot of the work was done months ago. Some things got delayed just finishing it up and then finding the time to get before the council. And so I will, I believe you've had the copies of the reports for a while, so I will give a quick overview. Seems like you're going to have a big meeting tonight and may not want to spend an hour on the financials, and I don't think we need to. But I'll go through each one, and I'll, if it's okay through the chair, that I can address questions that anybody has relative to any one of the reports. So there's three reports that we'll discuss as part of, it's called a single audit, meaning that it's a state and federal compliance audit, there's management letters, and then there's a financial statement audit. One of the requirements is that you have to do, anytime you receive over $750,000 in any one particular fiscal year from the federal government, either through direct grant or through the state, you have to do a compliance audit for them. In 2017, the town received about $2.4 million. Most of that, a lot of that, was school-related, school lunch, special education, other school grants, and you had several, we had four grants from Homeland Security, of which $500,000 was one. And basically, what the federal rules are, we take a look at all the internal controls surrounding the whole project. And in addition to that, any what's considered a major grant, they want you to focus on the larger grants and shift it around each year. You have to do a specific compliance audit with that. In 2017, it was a special education grant, which was about $600,000 worth of the expenditures. Like in, in the past, school does a very good job relative to their grants. We had no findings, no issues, and there's a series of program steps we have to audit to, and the town basically passed out with flying colors, and we didn't have any modifications to our reports. And so that's a clean opinion and report. If anybody had any questions on that, I'll move on.
I just wanted to ask what the $500,000 hazard mitigation program was.
That, that was a one-time grant, and there's, you, do you remember what exactly that was? Because we didn't look at that one. It didn't cover that, but in detail. But it was from Homeland Security, and it was an exact $500,000 that you got as a grant for expenditures relative to that. And again, I think it was coastal area type of things, but I'm sorry, I didn't, we didn't audit that specifically. It was just part of the overall grant, and I can get back to you on that, the exact purpose of that. But yeah, that's, that was kind of, I think that was a one-time shot. You just got a half a million dollars to help offset some costs. Any other questions on that? If not, the next report is the report and examination of the basic financial statements. And inside the basic financial statements, it basically presents your results of operations for the year, gives you a statement in net position, which is an accrual-based accounting, to let you know how you, well you did if you were kind of doing accounting like a business does. But obviously, a town doesn't operate the same as a business. You've got a different focus on there. So inside of here is a budgetary report on your general fund, how well you did budget to actual, in compliance with the Department of Revenue's rules and regulations of how you have to maintain your books. That's what generates free cash. And in effect, in 2017, you about broke even when you take a look at what happened. You used a lot of free cash in 2017, but in net effect was you only, had a deficit drop in there for about $200,000 to $300,000, and you used about $2.7 million. Part of what you did, you transferred a lot of money over to the stabilization fund. So for the general fund, it looks like your fund balance went down by about $1,007,000, but it really went down by a few hundred thousand dollars, because all you did was move money out of the general fund and put it in a stabilization fund to increase that balance. And so there was no, I didn't see any issues in there relative to your budget to actual statements, and things went well. Then there's a fund-based statement, and the fund-based statements take a look at, it's called a modified accrual basis of accounting, and that's kind of where a lot of the rating agencies look at to see how well you did in comparison to other communities throughout the nation. They have a standard set of rules that, the budgetary basis are the accounting rules in Massachusetts. A fund-based statement is the accounting rules for general fund operations in the nation. So now you'd be able to, you know, match apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Different state have different budgetary rules, so it's hard to compare free cash. Free cash is only a Massachusetts item. It's, you won't find that anywhere else. It's a good number for you to have and take a look at, and how you, you know, construct your budget and where you are from your budgetary standpoint. But for comparison to other communities throughout the nation, that's one of the things they, they look at. You have in there about $7 million worth of fund balance. Again, you only went down about $300,000 between the years. A pretty much break-even scenario. Inside of that, you have $2.1 million worth of the general stabilization fund at June 30, 17. Capital stabilization was about 1.7, and you had a building stabilization for two. Again, it looks in pretty good shape from financial analysis. Everything that's supposed to be in there has been accounted for properly, and, you know, the, the break-even piece is good, and also the establishment of stabilization funds, I think, is a sound business decision, just to save off, you know, things happen all the time, and it gives you a little financial flexibility in order to react to something that may happen in any particular year. Nothing in there of note relative to that. Transfer is out. You had $175,000 transfer over to subsidize the ferry operation. As, as part of it, you had, and even in the ferry operation, you had about $50,000 coming in from the state to help subsidize that particular operation. Nothing else in there of specific note. You have other funds that are in there. If you take a look at your financial statements themselves, you had at the end in 17, your middle set, middle high school project, capital projects, the Lewis Lake project, and the Miller Field was just kind of starting at the end of fiscal year 17, should have been completed during 18, a lot of this work. And these are funds that are usually funded by bond issues, things like that, state grants from the MSBA for the high school project. They're, they're on a temporary basis. And so in effect, money's put into it to cover the construction costs and the building costs, and at the end of the project, you usually have a little bit left over, hopefully, as opposed to going into deficit. And once that project's completed, any remaining funds are usually voted to be transferred to use to another capital project. Again, they're accounted for correctly. Don't worry about deficits that you see in that particular fund as you go through that because it's only temporary. And until you issue all your long-term debt, all the MSBA proceeds come in from the school, you may just have a short-term deficit position, but your cash flow's okay. Other funds that are important when you take a look at it is your enterprise funds. Inside of here, the financial statements are on a full accrual basis of accounting. It doesn't really match up well to how you really operate. The water and sewer funds, the, the rink, the harbor, recreation, the ferry are still budgeted as part of your recap, and they really are almost on a cash basis accounting, similar to what you do with your general fund. And that's really how you want to measure that. And so one of the things that, that are in there when we take a look at it is that whether or not, inside the statement of cash flows, that are you using more cash? Are you taking in enough cash to cover your current operations? And realistically, your water and sewer fund is. When you go through that, you'll see a big deficit in there from a cash standpoint, if you look at the cash flow statement. But that was mainly for the acquisition of capital assets through bond proceeds. So that's really not an operational thing that you take when you get your certified retained earnings. Again, you had a cash surplus for the year of about $200,000 to $300,000 from operations, which was good. The rink and harbor had small but positive cash flow as part of that. Recreation had a $90,000 deficit in, in fiscal 17. Again, not a lot of money, but something you, you want to take a look at and make sure that you're okay. And like I said earlier, the ferry threw a combination of a subsidy from the general fund of about 175, and $52,000, yeah, $50,000, $51,000 from the state had you pretty much breaking even on, on that operation. But obviously, a $225,000 subsidy is required, and I believe the state's going to continue to give you a subsidy as, as time goes on. Obviously, just watch that and make sure you don't end up with any type of significant deficit building up and not funding it, not realizing it. But I think you'll be aware of that through the budgetary process and as you go through. Also in the financial statement, there's probably two big things that are there from a long-term liability standpoint. Your pension liability. You actually had a pretty good year in your pension system in 17, and I imagine 18, everybody was seeing, so the, so for the year ending, you know, 12/31/17, which would have been last year, the market went up a lot. You still, in the prior year, had a rate of return of about 7.5 percent for the year, which was pretty good. One of the good things about your pension system, actually too, is when we take a look at it, a lot of systems need investment income to, in effect, break even on a cash basis. So when you take your contributions in from your members, you know, from the member units, the housing authority and, and the town, and you add to that any transfers in or 380 payments or other contributions that comes in from the state for the coal or things like that, you have a surplus when you take that and you subtract out the actual payments to the retirees and the administration. And that's positive because you're not relying on investment income to keep a positive growth in, in that particular fund, which is good. One of the reasons that you see, you're almost 80 percent funded, which is so much higher than most of the systems out there. And you use a 7.5 percent discount rate, which is kind of the norm that most use that. And, and so that is a, a real positive when you take a look at it, especially when you consider, you know, you have about a $16 million total liability, meaning that you're underfunded by 16 million, but you're really in, in pretty good shape. You compare that to your OPEB liability. Your OPEB liability is about $75 million, because you haven't sent money aside. And OPEB is other post-employment benefits. In, in effect, it's retirees' health insurance. So that's the one that really, you haven't put any money aside for that. Discount rate's a lot lower. But one of the things that you'll have an advantage of compared to a lot of other communities and the other retirement systems is that a lot of them are 48, 50 percent funded, maybe 60 with the same rate. So they're almost 30 percentage points behind in funding that. That you'll have the ability to fund this in a more aggressive nature, if everything still works out. And this year, you're probably even better than that with the rate of return we're seeing at Pritt and everybody else. But what will happen is that, that appropriation that you normally send over to the pension, once you're fully funded, will go down a lot. And then you'll have the opportunity, if it's part of your plan, is to ship that extra payment over to the OPEB plan, so it's not like it's a big surplus. You could, if you want to, start doing that. That's years down the road, but I'm just saying you're in good position.
When is the state mandating that you have to be 100 percent funded?
You have to, you have to do that for the pensions by 2040.
Right.
Forty.
Forty.
Yeah. It used to be 2028.
Because it was, when we first started, we were under a gun.
Yeah, it was 2028 when they first did it, and then nobody was kind of making it, then it went to 2030, and now it's at 2040. Okay?
We're still on the earlier schedule, so we will be funded in 2028.
2028.
Yeah, I think it's 2028.
2028.
2027.
Yeah. And so when that happens, you'll have some additional funds that you can put to the OPEB and, and address that particular liability. Those are the two big issues from a long-term nature that everybody's concerned of. And again, depending on whether you want to start contributing to the OPEB is, is more of a budgetary issue. You don't have to legally. You just have to do pay-as-you-go. It's completely optional for each, each community. So it's up to you, whereas the pension system, everybody has to do the same thing. And like, like we're saying, it's 2040 for everybody. A lot of people might be 50 percent funded, but they have to go all the way to 2040 as opposed to you doing 12 years earlier in 2028. Very positive from a financial outlook standpoint. So that's kind of the big key issues on the financials. Anybody had any questions on that? Addressing?
Mr. Powers, I'm wondering what sort of the bottom-line lessons learned from this audit? What information can we use from this to do better in the future?
Well, well, the thing is that, what I see is, is you're doing a lot of things very well, that, say, from your, your budget. Take a look at the budget to actual statement for the general fund. You had about $600,000 worth of surplus revenues when you take a look at your motor vehicle and the big things when you get to, you really don't get a surplus in the state aid, which is about $12 million, and about $30 million worth of real estate taxes. But your motor vehicle and your other revenue is about $4 million. You get a surplus. And budgeting conservatively really helps you manage that long-term perspective, because all of a sudden, that's $600,000 worth of free cash. And the town does use its free cash for various reasons, but what I find a lot of times is people, communities will budget right to the, try to write to the penny and push everything, and all of a sudden end up with a revenue deficit on that, and that hits you hard, and it really drops your, your fund balance, and you lose a lot of financial flexibility as you move forward. The same thing with the expenditures. You had a little over $600,000 in turnbacks out of your $40, you know, the $27, $28 million that you budgeted. So that actually is another positive, so you keep going on that. And the other thing that you're learning is that you're, and you're doing, you're putting money aside into the stabilization fund and hitting those particular plans. Enterprise funds budgeted to maintain that positive cash flow, so that's the big takeaway. And you are aggressive, like Mike was saying, about funding your, being more aggressive in funding your, your pension liability. The quicker you get rid of that, the better off you will be, and will free up a lot of other money relative to that. You'd be surprised how much your appropriation will drop once you get to that point. From a management letter standpoint, we have several points in there, but the thing you want to learn from there is that there's no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in there. And basically, you don't want to have a material weakness. That means the, the assets of the town are at risk, that you don't, either through operation or policy, and, and that you don't have sufficient internal controls to safeguard your assets. The cash is being reconciled on a timely basis. You receiveables. Your budgets that are put in there are accurate. They tied in. We didn't have any issues with that going through. We see your ledges being maintained properly in accordance with UMass Uniform Municipal Accounting System by the DOR. And so what you should be able to do is, you know, from the accountant's office, as you go through, as interim reports go through, and as management looks at where you are throughout the year, it should give you an accurate representation of where you are. You don't want to find out after year-end that you have a revenue deficit. You'd rather take a look at that from a projection standpoint and find that out in February, because then you could adjust your expenditures maybe to make sure that you, you offset that particular deficit. So those are the things that I think are positive. Inside the management letter, we have several little, small issues, all really being addressed. A couple of them probably have already been corrected as, as of now. Nothing in there that's of significance. We can go over those if you want to. Not that big an issue, but if anybody had a question on any one of them, I can certainly address that, if that answers your question.
Everybody else?
Only, you had said we needed control, some, some better controls over the senior side.
Yeah.
And of course, we had lost a directive, the senior side.
Right. That was kind of a.
And that may have been the reason with, with the change.
Right.
But I'm sure it's being addressed and taken.
Yeah, it's been addressed. The only issue that we still had left is, we was thinking that the friends of the council and aging in there, and we were talking about this in general terms earlier today, is that it's not only a good thing for them, but any other friends of the, friends of whatever, there's a lot of friends, that you really should memorialize and document how that interaction works. If you're going to give money, if you're going to pay money, if you're going to do that because, and if you talk to your attorneys, you don't want to expose yourself to liabilities because of what you think is okay, we want to get money. And so that's kind of what we were pointing out, the last type of piece that needs to be addressed in that, but also in other places, is.
Is the feeling that if the friends of the council and aging in there raise so much money, and they need something down there, and they have to, they can't just give it to them? They have to?
Oh, they can give it to them. It's just then you'd accept it as a gift, then. It depends on how you structure that. That's why I think it's important that everybody on both sides know, if we raise this, you know, it was friends in the library, we're going to donate a bunch of books. Well, that's a pretty easy acceptance, et cetera. It's what they do if you're getting cash, who's going to control a project if you say, all right, we've got $40,000, we can help you here, but we want to control it from the outside. That gets, from an internal control standpoint, it exposes you to some unnecessary risk, but you don't want to also defeat the purpose of good people helping out the town and donating money. It's just more of the accounting structure and to make sure, when you talk to your attorneys, that your exposure and risk is limited relative to that, and then everybody benefits from, you know, their good efforts on that. And the only other thing that's probably important in the management letter is that you had hired a, just getting your risk assessment done for your IT, controls, disaster recovery plan. One of the biggest things that are out there right now, even from when we wrote this, cybersecurity is becoming a huge issue. And as part of that process, as you're going through, and I know that they've been going through in 18 to get that disaster recovery plan, but at the same time, there should be a cybersecurity policies, procedures, and what you're doing to protect yourself from that. It's just, it's a little wide, you know, wide open right now if you don't protect yourself relative to that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Public comment?
Sorry for speaking out of line.
It's quite all right.
It was a misunderstanding.
Thank you, Biz.
I'm Asher Ryan, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health here, my fellow members, Bill Schmidt and Susan McGuire. We just called in an emergency meeting on Board of Health prior to this town council meeting to discuss the mosquito spraying is scheduled for Thursday. That is an adulticide spraying, meaning it will only kill flying mosquitoes out at the time of spraying. The spraying is usually done after sunset to protect bees, which are, you know, one insect that is, this adulticide is very toxic to, and it's also toxic to fish, by the way, and other organisms. Anyway, so we received the notice, just like everybody else did, in our email, and we reviewed the usual procedures for these sprays. And actually, there's a best management practice plan that Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control and Management District has in place with Winthrop. And it includes a whole list of control measures specific to Winthrop. One of them is adulticideing, and it states that virus intervention, it's done for virus intervention only and with Board of Health approval. And this was not run by us before. And it's also another fact, no viruses have been detected in Winthrop this year at all, not West Nile virus, not Triple E. There's one case of triple, of West Nile virus that was detected in Linfield in a bird-eating species, so not a mammal-biting species, bird-biting species. And so subsequent testing was negative. So the overall risk in our community and the neighboring community for West Nile virus right now is moderate. That does not really mean that we should do adulticideing at this point. According to the very strict recommendations that the Department of Public Health is giving with respect to when we should be doing adulticideing, we should really focus our efforts on prevention of mosquito breeding. There have been multiple requests to the inspection services and complaints from residents about an increase in mosquitoes being out biting people during the day. Those mosquitoes are actually salt marsh mosquitoes. They're brought into town with the wind from the budding salt marshes. And those mosquitoes are not commonly vectors for any viral diseases. And also, those mosquitoes are active during the daytime. So they would not be hit by the adulticide at all. So the complaints would likely continue. There will not be any effect of the spraying. Therefore, we have voted unanimously today that we will cancel the spraying request for this coming Thursday. I want to emphasize that that does not mean that we're not ever spraying, okay? We will request and approve spraying if it is in accordance with our best practice plan, which is the case when we have positive cases of West Nile virus detected. I also want to say that I talked to the entomologist who conducts our testing from NEMMC, Kimberly Foss, and on the phone today. And she also told me that we have actually quite low numbers of flying mosquitoes out during the night and evening hours. They're 70% lower than last year, which actually speaks to the efficiency of their treatment. The numbers that are high are the daytime flying mosquitoes, and these do not carry viruses commonly. So as a result, we do not believe that adulticideing is necessary at this point. We recommend that all residents of Winthrop educate themselves about what they can do themselves to protect themselves from mosquito exposure with proper clothing, with deep applications, and also make sure that they don't have any standing pools of waters in their yard and so on and so forth. We also know that there is a, some kind of a area on the Hound Ave that has been sort of singled out as a source for breeding ground for mosquitoes right now. This area is being effectively treated by the New England, sorry, the Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control People with Larvicideing, which is a bacterial agent that does not kill adult mosquitoes. It kills larvae, and it's not toxic to other insects and other animals or humans. So that is being performed very much right now, and that's what we recommend at this point. And that was our announcement. Do you have anything to add at this point? Thank you. If you have any questions, we can be contacted. We also have a meeting next week on August 14 at 6:00 in this room. We have a public comment period. If anybody has something to ask or has any issues with this, they're very welcome to talk to us then.
Linda Persar, 17 baby. I just have a question. I saw that National Grid is on the agenda tonight. Would this be the time for me to make a comment, or after they speak, would I be able to make a comment then?
They're on the agenda, just as correspondence, I'm going to read the correspondence that we received from a gentleman regarding that.
So can I make a comment now?
Sure.
Okay. So I have concerns about what's been going on with National Grid. I know that, you know, they're currently on lockout, and there's all these other things going on. And just this week, right next to my house, another house, brand new, is being built. There's never been a house on this particular lot. They dug today down a few feet, and I have concerns about if they're going to put gas lines in, that it's not necessarily going to be somebody who has experience putting in gas lines and is right next to my house. So we're there, my kids are there. I have a lot of concerns about safety with any new gas lines going in or gas lines being replaced. Unless it's an emergency, I get that. That is, that's beyond what I'm talking about. I'm talking about like ongoing projects, like the BBW doing all their projects and things like that. I have concerns about people that may not have enough experience or as much experience coming in and putting in gas lines. So I wanted to put that out there. So you, you know, I don't know what exactly is going to be talked about with National Grid, but I just want to put that out there for the council to consider.
I was hoping to, I'm a president of one of the unions that was locked out. I was hoping to address the council, and that would be the time on this issue.
Please state your name.
My name is John Bonapani. I live in Melrose. I represent about 400 of the 1,200 employees that were locked out by National Grid on June 25. I say locked out, if you're not familiar with labor law, a lockout is when the company takes action against the union. It's not a strike. We didn't choose to be locked out of our jobs. We actually offered to extend the collective bargaining agreement and continue to bargain and keep it working while we did that. We did that on June 25 when we were locked out, and we did it again on July 5, and the company flat-out refused. They said, we're not doing that. We're replacing you. We have a contingency plan, basically to pressure everyone into taking their offer, which was totally unnecessary. They didn't have to do what they did. We wanted to talk about a moratorium, and a lot of people are talking about support for the union, and that's great, and we appreciate any support that anybody can give us. You know, again, we have 1,200 people out there. The company cut their health care, really struggling people with serious illnesses, just cut the health care. They cut the life insurance. They cut dental, every benefit that we were provided under the collective bargaining agreement, they just cut, again, to pressure us. This is about public safety. This is about the public safety of the people who live in Winthrop. And I'll tell, give you my background because I can personally speak to that. I've worked for National Grid for over 30 years. I'm not a full-time union representative. I'm one of the people that responds to emergencies in the town. I've spent a lot of time in Winthrop over the years. Actually, my first gas leak that I responded to, almost 30 years ago, was on Washington Street. And I remember it like it was last week. But I've been here through all the floods in the early 90s. I've responded to more carbon dioxide calls and grade-one leaks, which are the most dangerous than I can remember. Actually, this past winter, I was at Point Shirley when there were flooding problems, and I had a CO call at the fire station on Shirley Street. So I'm personally one of those people that respond to this type of stuff. My title is, I'm an Emergents Response Unit. I'm a pipe fitter. I do all kinds of work. So when I talk about this stuff, if you have any questions, I can answer them. I'm here to talk about what this resident just kind of talked about, a moratorium. And we're going from city to town, explaining to people why we think it's necessary that you implement a moratorium. Right now, some of the cities and towns that have already passed official resolutions to do this, Riviera, Medford, Braintree, Arlington, Haverhill, Lowell, Cambridge, Weymouth, Methuen, Somerville passed a directive, and some of the cities and towns that are working on it right now have passed unofficial resolutions, but just because of the timing and their meetings, they haven't done it officially. Malden Everett in Boston, to just name a couple. The reason we're doing this, when the company locked us out, as I said, they had a contingency plan. They placed many inexperienced people out in the field to replace us. Many have never actually had the job that we do. Supervisors today, for the most part, different than it used to be years ago, most part now they're hired from the outside. They don't come up through the ranks like years ago. It happens, but not like it used to. So many of the people out there right now who supervise the people who actually service the city and the towns have never held the job. They don't do it. Many people here tonight, some of them are residents, some of them actually service the town of Winthrop, they're here tonight. If you have any questions, again, we can talk about it. Some of the people that they used to replace us literally were taken out of an office one day, put in a classroom chair, given a quick training, a test, and sent out on a pro. That's the type of people they have replacing us right now. We have over 30 complaints at the Department of Public Utilities that they're investigating with videos and pictures of what we think is unsafe activity. We've met with the Attorney General's office. So we're trying to make sure that these issues get addressed at, not only at the city and town level, but at the state level. We don't think National Grid, if they try and start these type of projects, again, like this resident said, new main replacement, new services, these contractors that they typically use are not going to have the proper oversight. Sorry. Yeah. So we're asking that you pass a resolution to basically stop National Grid from doing any newer replacement projects in the town. I mean, that's what it comes down to. If you have any questions after, if you need any more information, I'd be more than happy to meet. I can send you whatever you think you need. But we really think that until National Grid puts, you know, all of us back to work, including the people in this room, people living in Winthrop, that they shouldn't be allowed to come in and do those type of projects, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm also in St. Michael's, I also live in town, Precinct 3. What do you say is absolutely correct? I'm also a crew leader on a maintenance crew, maintenance and damage crew. If there's an explosion or something, we're usually the first guys who respond to that to the service department. It's not an exaggeration of what you have, what they have out there right now. They're literally people that come in from their offices, management. They do take like a two-day course, and I think that's absolutely absurd that a two-day course is enough for them to be out in the street, and they also have the contractors that are working with them, that they say are trained, and I know they're not. They're not trained as much as we are. I've been there for 18 years, and I can honestly say every year, sometimes, I believe we have four to five weeks of training, review of federal procedures and state procedures. There's a lot that goes into just fixing the gas. There's a lot of procedures. And I'm out there at the jobs that they're on now. I cover Boston. They're not following the procedures. And every time they don't follow a procedure, there's a chance of an explosion or a serious injury to a resident. That's all that I say. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on the mosquito spray. I just want to make a suggestion on Facebook. Everybody...
Diane. Hold on a second. Last month, we passed new council rules, and rules to the conduct that, public comment.
Yeah.
When you speak, you public comment, pass rules, you have to stand up, say your name, occupation, you have three minutes.
My occupation?
I mean, you're...
I'm a guy.
You're not your occupation, you're precinct.
I was a nurse, though.
Your precinct or your address, and you have three minutes, all right?
And my address.
And your address or your precinct, either one, so that you know that you're a town person.
I'm a town person.
All right. If you're not a town person, like the previous guy, you have to ask permission. Of course, we would give you permission, but you have to ask permission if you're not from the town of Winthrop.
Diane Sims, precinct... I just wanted to add that I've been reading about these mosquitoes being horrible on Facebook and Winthrop's open discussion. I am experienced as a girl, but I don't go out. Anyway, they've been complaining forever. So I just think you ought to put something on Facebook and something on the open discussion because they'll be having fits. I can just see the comments. They're not going to do it now. Just explain to them.
We will put that information I gave tonight, including some more, in a proper format, and we'll post it to all Facebook forums. We'll also post it to our website, on the town website. And we will also provide an information to the transcript so it's properly displayed. So yes, we will do that. There's evidence base, you know, for this kind of, for these kinds of regulations, and we should adhere to those.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes.
President Vecchione, members of the council, thank you for adding this to the agenda tonight. Tino Capomillo, Precinct 3. If you recall, two years ago, we passed a similar resolution regarding question two in the school committee, standing in our teachers' association. So it's not against the wheel here, this resolution. So I'm hoping that one of you this evening will make a motion to support this resolution, do what's in the best interest of public safety in Winthrop, but also from a moral standpoint, stand with working people, not a multi-billion dollar corporation like National Grid, because no one should be locked out of the job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kristen Reynolds, Precinct 5. I'm the president of the Winthrop Teachers Association. Speaking on my own behalf, I'm here to support the moratorium on permits and new gas lines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Jeanne O'Neill, 17 baby. Also, she is support for keeping... Jeanette O'Neil, 17 Beadie Ave. Also, she needs support for keeping professionals upon the job for gas lines. It seems very dangerous to be playing around with something like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Could I get a point of clarification from this gentleman? Will you speak about a moratorium?
Yes.
Does that refer specifically to government or municipal projects? Or is that also private homeowners?
Would be any new or replacement project. So any time...
As opposed to emergency work?
Anytime, no, we're not talking about emergencies. No, emergencies, we understand, obviously. I've responded to enough of them to know that you have to respond to them. We're not talking about emergencies.
So it's pre-planned, new construction?
Correct, yes. The company right now has what they're calling a GSEP, Gas System Enhancement Plan. They have a plan to replace all the lead chrome pipe over the next 20 to 25 years throughout the system, whether it's Winthrop, Riviera. That's really what we're talking about. They shouldn't be allowed to do that type of stuff when they have the people who oversee those jobs. We inspect and monitor them. We're kind of like policemen on those jobs, the contractors.
So that work is ongoing currently?
I don't think they're doing it right now. What we've been told is at some point, if this lockout drags on, and hopefully, we don't think it drags much longer, but they will try to start some of these projects. They may not even come to Winthrop. They may do it in another town. This is really a precaution to just say, no, let's wait till this is done, then you can come back and do what you got to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, Jim?
Jacked Out Precinct 3. I've asked a few questions regarding Shore Drive. A few people that I don't want to identify, didn't know him better. What type of plant are they cultivating on the north end of Shore Drive? Does anybody know? What type of plant are they cultivating on the north end of Shore Drive, in the rocks? Does anybody have any idea?
I haven't got any information on that.
I've talked about the weeds.
It's ragweed. I want to know, people used to come to this town to breathe fresh air, ocean air. And when this weed spores or whatever it does, a lot of people are concerned about, especially people with COPD, are concerned about breathing on Shore Drive. I was wondering if somebody from the state can answer that question. Are they going to remove it? Are they going to let it continue to grow? I think the place down there, it looks like a forest, they're three feet high, ragweed, like a leaf. Two people that they asked don't know anything about it. So hopefully, someone from the town can ask the question of the state. Is the ragweed going to be removed, or is it going to be allowed to grow on Shore Drive? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Rules of... I'm sorry, Diane.
Is this the only public comment we have? I don't know if I can bring this stuff up.
You can bring it up. There's another public comment at the end.
Okay.
Okay? You should know by now. You've been doing enough of these meetings.
Okay, correspondence. I did receive a correspondent from Tino Capabianco. The council received the Dear President Vecchia and honorable members of the council. I am writing to you this afternoon as a concerned Winthrop citizen, asking you to stand with the working people and not National Grid, a billion-dollar corporation. I attached a letter from the USW Local 120112, which further explains the implication of the proposed resolution, along with language from resolutions passed in Braintree and in Medford. Just last night, a resolution was passed by the city of Riviera, the Riviera City Council as well. I hope that the council will consider passing a resolution, standing with the United Steelworkers Local 12012. In the town of Winthrop alone, we have a large number of residents being affected by the strike. Regards, Tino Capabianco, 53 Prospect Avenue.
Any discussion? Yes?
Would it be proper for us to make, while we formulate some type of a resolution or something along the lines of what the individuals have spoken about, public comment, would it be appropriate for the council, this is a point of clarification, to direct the town manager to maybe raise the amount of scrutiny given to permits, or anything that would have happened, obviously, on a non-emergency basis that would be given to new construction that National Grid might be applying for in the meantime, while we come up with some type of resolution?
Counsel?
I suppose we can direct the town manager to do anything we like to do. I don't think we can pass a resolution tonight. I think it has to be put over no matter what, because it's on the agenda as correspondence and not for a motion. So, you know, I would suggest we put this over to our next meeting for possible resolution, put it on the agenda that way. And in the meantime, have the town manager do some research. I don't know if anybody is doing anything, if we have, you know, any building going on in town right now, bringing in gas. And I don't think anyone here would know that, even the town manager right now, would you, David?
Have you been contacted, David?
By anybody from National Grid?
Well, I was contacted by National Grid, but I can't say what work they're doing in town right now.
The permits would come through DPW. Typically, we don't, they don't request permit for emergency work. They'll do the emergency work and then enforce. Any new projects, any new infrastructure projects, got to be permitted before they would break ground. There were no pending permits.
There were no pending.
So we'll take this until the last, the next meeting? We'll draft a, you want to draft a resolution?
You want to make the motion, put it on the agenda, is that what?
Could I make a motion to direct the town manager in the meantime to, you know, have a heightened, add a heightened level of scrutiny onto any new permits that might be put in? Similar, read the Braintree resolution, and they have similar language in their resolution. So I thought that that might be appropriate for us to do right now, or maybe a new business.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that a motion?
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Or was that?
Can I?
I think we can do a direct motion, but I don't think we can do a motion on tonight's meeting.
Just physically direct them. Town manager's report. Yeah, the town manager's report.
Great.
Okay. All right.
Heather, you asked for it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the DPW committee for further discussion and research about what permitting might be pending and how we might respond to it in a constructive and proactive way.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
I just want to mention one thing. And the only thing that I can think of is some of the people who have been through flooding, damage, or whatever, who are in the process of rebuilding their home and finally getting their insurance check, like, while we want to protect the people who are suffering because of this job employment, I also don't want someone to be outside of their home that they've been waiting to come into. So I would love to, like, have those kind of data points. And if we need to have a special circumstance, like an emergency, if someone has been outside their home for six or seven months that needs to get back in there, I don't want to hold them up at this point. So I'd just like to have that data before we made the decision of whatever direction we would go with this recommended motion.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next item, committee reports. Appointments and commissions. Counsel Lacerda.
All right. So, our subcommittee met on the 31st. We were, the main reason why we were meeting, Mr. McDuffie and I, or Counsel McDuffie and I, was to go over a document, thank you very much, a proposed new document for the town manager, performance evaluation. And what has been done is a bunch of different research. We've reached out to every single municipality in Massachusetts that has our form of government, and taken a look at their review documents. And rather than reinventing the wheel, looking at what they, how they measure their town manager, and also try and get a little bit more beef in the sort of goals and objectives department, before our previous document was much more of like a skill-based, does the manager communicate well, yes or no. This way, we wanted to actually put specific to Winthrop objectives that we believe the council and the public are interested in. So we worked through a draft, and everybody has that in their email, the draft document. And what I would like to do is follow up with another subcommittee meeting before our next full council meeting, to get a final draft and bring it forward to everybody to approve, now that we are close to having a new permanent town manager.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Rules and ordinance?
The rules and ordinance committee met this evening, August 6, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the town council chambers. Meeting was called to order at 7:00 p.m. President Wre myself is chairman, and member Heather Engman, and then the absent member Nick LaConti. The agenda was one item, and that was should the town adopt master general laws, annotated Chapter 32, Section 28. There was a discussion amongst us, a letter was read from the chairman of the retirement board, who was Francis Carberry, who requested this motion. A motion was made by Counselor Engman to adopt master general laws, Chapter 32, Section 28, provided we receive a favorable opinion from our town attorney, and that the retirement board would incur any new insurance premiums which occur as a result of this motion. We're seconded by myself. It was passed unanimously. We'll be making a motion on the new business on this issue. And the meeting was adjourned at 7:15.
Any questions? Nope. Finance. Counsel LeTiri.
Thank you. Finance committee met this evening at 6 o'clock. President Wre, myself is chair, Counselor LaConti, Counselor Christopher as members, also Counsel President Vecchia, Counselor Engman, CFO Perez, POX and Rec Director Driscoll, Mr. Dowd. And we had three items that we discussed. One, because of time, because of an executive session, we were not able to go over when we will go over, which is the sale of land at 413, 415 Shirley Street. We also had discussion with POX and Rec, with Director Driscoll, over budgeting procedures, and many discussion points, not limited to looking to the future for potential new space for the POX and Rec department, and other items that were pertinent to their budget process, and also the major pointed. And the other item was the MVP grant match of $52,266 for Ingles High Park and the surrounding neighborhood, which is roughly a quarter of a million dollar project, which, this is our grant match. After much discussion, it was voted for positive recommendation, will be brought to the council under old business. Meeting was adjourned, and I would like to schedule, since I have the floor, a finance committee meeting for next Thursday, August 16, at 4:30 in the afternoon of the council chambers. Thank you.
Questions? No. Capital assets is scheduled for the 20th. Any comments, Counsel Engman?
No.
Okay. Town manager's report.
In terms of town manager's report, there will now just not be any spending this Thursday. In terms of rodent extermination, there's been additional baiting, place near Ural Beach, page extermination, added 20 bait stations, four private properties were also baited, and they're also going to bait some sewer drains. I also wish to announce that as of August 20, Kathy Dixon will be moving from an acting position at the council, and aging as our director, to a permanent position. So we're completing that. Finally, pleased to report that we sent in all the paperwork now, as of today, and it's been received by MSBA. This will allow us to close out the middle high school project. It will allow us to get our final reimbursement from the MSBA, and it will ensure that there is no deficit in that account in terms of the closeout of our fiscal year budget. We were faced with a $300,000 deficit because we had not gotten reimbursement. That couldn't be done until we were able to get the audit completed, so.
Two questions. First of all, congratulations to Kathy Dixon. I think she'll do a tremendous job down there. I have all the confidence in the world in her. And congratulations to Kathy. On the MSBA, it's been a long process. It's been, you know, I've been there five-plus years, and it's nice to see a project come to fruition. And just to let the public know, there will still be a reimbursement after that deficit is met.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're getting a check of about $1.8 million, which wipes away that deficit. So that's the good news.
And the one question I have for you, there's a, which was brought to me by a citizen, and I've looked at it, and it sounds, it seems very interesting, and I think would be a good idea. There's a 3-1-1 program, or 3-1-1 app.
Sure.
So I have a couple of calls into them. They have yet to call me back. But basically, it's a reporting system that would let residents, better citizen engagement, and let residents report non-emergency type issues to the town, for whether it be graffiti, potholes, or, you know, broken streetlight, whatever. It just gives more accountability, I guess, to the citizens, gets them more involved. And I think it could be something that could really benefit the town. So I've tried to reach out a couple of times, haven't been able to do so. I'd be more than happy to pass the number on to you, or if you have anything you'd like to add about it, or what you know about it.
Well, if you can pass along the number, I'll try and contact them. But there are a number of similar programs out there. 3-1-1 sometimes is more of a, almost like a second dispatch, well, not really dispatch, but answering service for the community that some communities have created. Somerville, yeah, Somerville did it. But what you're talking about more is See, Click, Fix was one of the apps, I think, that was created and utilized in Boston and some other communities for residents in order to transmit information to the community about issues like that. And where I worked before, we had another application that residents could use, and just on the website, do that.
And through the chair, can I ask the CFO to just speak on this also?
So the challenge with these is the volume of data that comes in, which is both a good thing and a bad thing. And I've seen it in a number of different communities where the public works department is just inundated with requests. And it's everything from taking a picture of a crack on the sidewalk, saying the sidewalk needs to be replaced, and then someone physically has to go and evaluate the sidewalk and say, okay, no, this is just a crack on the sidewalk. It's on the capital plan. It's, you know, this. And so it is a very resource-intensive process that I would hesitate to hand off to the DPW without a significant commitment of additional resources to them, in order to be able to manage the volume that they'd be dealing with, as well as the fact that without an electronic work order system, it ends up creating another layer of work that every single request has to then get printed out and handed to someone to go do. Then they have to do it. They have to write their notes, and then it has to be transferred back into the system. So it's a great program. It's something that is very beneficial from a transparency standpoint and from just citizen engagement. But it's, there's a lot to it. And there's a lot of infrastructure that we would need to have in place in order for it to be successful.
I'm just asking that we could find out as much information, so I could be more knowledgeable about it. And, you know, nothing comes easy, and see what happens.
I was going to say that the chamber, when they were building their Winthrop Chamber app, it had that functionality piece too. But at the time, when that was first being developed, the idea, like you mentioned, who's on the end of it, who's actually going to respond to it? So it's like, yeah, we can collect all this data, and we can have, we can offer it. But unless we're going to staff it appropriately, what's the sense? Because people then expect that someone is actually going to come up Because people then expect that someone is actually going to come up and fix something, and if there's no one actually replying to it at the end, what's going to happen then? But I do, I do believe that that, the Chamber app has that functionality, just was never turned on.
Okay. So, Town Manager will research. Any other questions?
Councilor President.
Yes.
Mr. Kressman, I'm wondering with Mr. Faison coming on hopefully in the next few weeks, do you foresee hiring any other permanent employees in that timeframe?
There may be one that we're just posting right now, and it's another acting position. And then there was a, a third one that I'm not sure we're going to move ahead with. We'll know in the next two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. School Department, update, there really is none. We had a very brief meeting last night just to sign the payroll, and the meeting before that was on vacation, so. All business, Parks and Rec budgets. We discussed that at the.
We did discuss it. We're going to, again, we, we didn't give the director the time I think he deserves, and, and we didn't give the committee enough time really to delve into it the way we wanted to, and we will be continuing that to a, to a subsequent Finance Committee meeting. You know, we think Parks and Rec has done an incredible job over the last, you know, this was a department that the town used to fund $150,000 a year, and about 12 years ago, that stopped, and we basically made it an enterprise fund where they were told, or asked to, to basically be self-sufficient. And, you know, they've basically through the last 12 years have saved the town over 1.5 million dollars. And now there's some, you know, issues, I think, with, with placement, with, you know, with all the transition we've gone through with the schools and stuff, and I think it would be helpful that the town look into, and I think we discussed, and I think Councilor Engman brought it up, that we look into, there's a lot of responsibilities for Parks and Rec that they don't have a lot of control over. For example, if, you know, a backboard gets smashed at a park, or something happens at a park, ultimately, a lot of times, DPW is incredibly helpful, I know, with them in fixing and repairing stuff, but a lot of times the bills end up on their desk. So, we're just trying to go in over a process that maybe eventually could find them a home that, that they could be happy with and flourish in, and that, and, and give them any help we can in, in creating a, a budget that's easy to work with and easy to deal with. So, it is something that we will be going over again at a future meeting, and we will come back and report on it at a future date.
Under Old Business, Transfer $52,266, that comes out of favorable report.
That does come out with a favorable report, yes.
So, that does not need a second. Will we move that now?
We can.
Okay. And I'll make, I'll make a motion. It does not need a second because it came out of Finance to transfer $52,266, the MVP grant matching money for the flooding Ingleside Park and surrounding neighborhood. Let's do a roll call. Any discussion?
Councilor Engman?
Yes.
Councilor Callum?
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Terry?
Yes.
Councilor Sardo?
Yes.
Councilor McDuffie?
Yes.
Councilor LaConti?
Yes.
As President Boncory?
Yes.
President Vecchia?
Yes.
Also, under Old Business, you discussed this tonight, the sale of land on 413-415 Shirley Street.
Yes, that's going to be put off until the next council meeting.
Okay, so that's put off to the next council meeting. Under Councilor Boncory, the retirement and indemnification, MGL 32, Section 28.
Yes, as I said under the report, the Rules and Ordnance Committee is submitting a motion for approval, and that motion is to adopt Mass General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 28, for our retirement board here in Wuthering.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The last item under Old Business is the contract extension for Town Manager Kressman. Request to be 90 days with a two-week escape clause. The reason why I call it an escape clause, we're going into a transition, we're anticipating that our new town manager will be starting on the 20th of this month, and I would like, Dave, to stay here for at least 30 days, depending on things go, during this transition period. But I would like that flexibility, if it has to be 90 days, but I don't anticipate that happening. So, I'd like to have someone make a motion. I'll make a motion. Okay. There's a motion to approve the contract extension of Town Manager Kressman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Under New Business, the appointment of a constable. So, I will hand the gavel to the Vice President. Motion, that Town Council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Ron Vecchia to appoint Francesco Piazza as a constable for the town of Wuthering, or take any other action thereto.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? If so, what?
Thank you. Under New Business, to appropriate $3,500 for public access of familiar field, that's going to be referred to Finance.
Motion referred to Finance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is a familiar figure in here. To appropriate $4,009, uh, $4,931,500 for the purpose of financing the construction of the town center, sewer and drainage, request for loan appropriation time extension for the center business infrastructure improvements and for the drains and sewers. Couple of councils saw this on here in their room. Why is this back? There's a reason why it's back. We have to make a decision.
Do you want me to?
Please.
Back in June, it was transmitted to us by our engineers that we had to request an extension on the decision of whether to accept, accept this grant or not. It's really, it's not a grant, it's more like a loan opportunity. And at that time, we went and we asked for a period of time into, I think, October 10th, thinking that that would give, based on some of the votes that it taped, the place here, and some other decisions people were making, would give time for people to think about this, and a decision being made, could be made at that time. Unfortunately, after your last meeting, we got notice from the state that they only agreed to extend the deadline to August 24th. So, that will, in a sense, be a few days after your next meeting. What this means is that after that time, you do not have $4.9 million guaranteed for this project. It means that your engineers will have to put in place another request for 2019 loan from the state for this program. You may be granted that loan in 2019, but there is no guarantee, number one. And number two is, I think you have to think about how this is all going to play out in terms of some of the other grants that you have, particularly the Mass Works Grant. That's a grant of almost $2.4 million. And that was supposed to be utilized and started as of June 30th, 2018. We've gotten an extension to 2019, but I'm not sure they're going to be excited about really starting things off unless you are progressing along at that point to be shovel-ready. And you already also have another scenario that is out there, which is the prior town manager had authorized at least $51,000 out of the Mass Works Grant to do some work of the engineering work, landscape, I guess, architect work associated with this project. Right now, that is showing, what?
That's already been spent.
That's already spent. So, what occurs is that, if I was wrong, Mike, my understanding is that shows up right now as a revenue deficit, special revenue deficit.
Not a revenue deficit, just a deficit, because there is no revenue.
Okay, well, a deficit.
Correct.
But it will impact free cash.
Correct.
Correct. So, that's another factor that's out there that's going to impact free cash, and then, of course, if you're not moving forward with the Mass Works Grant, then you're going to have to probably charge that off to Chapter 90 funds as a way of, of avoiding any of those deficits, which then cuts into the amount of Chapter 90 funds you have. So, bottom line, as I see it, is the decision can't wait until October 10th. The council has to make some decision concerning this project in two weeks, and rather than come in and say that to the council and the public, two weeks from now, I felt it was appropriate to lay this out right now, that this is in play. The other thing is also, I think, you need to be aware, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've already taken part of the, another sewer loan program as part of this program, and we've also done another MWRA water loan as part of this program, correct?
Correct.
And so, those are all now part of the water rates that were just approved, and you're paying death service on those. So, that's out there, and you have to address that at some point. Just a final point in disclosure is that if you do go forward with this $4.9 million loan, it will be another impact of 66 cents on the water and sewer rate.
So, as we did at the last meeting when we talked about the center project in general, I just wanted to say that I'll be accusing myself, and I'll sit in the audience while you guys discuss it.
And I will do the same. Councilor Engman?
I, I think, thank you, Mr. Kressman, for that report. That's really helpful. What would be even more helpful is to get this all sort of reduced to writing what the deadlines are, the extensions, what's already been spent, the loans, the grants, and get it really broken out in the next couple of days. And I would suggest we schedule a, a special meeting and a discussion to figure out exactly what we're going to do.
Okay. Anyone else? Nick?
Mr. Kressman, given those facts you just laid out, what do you see as our options? Is it go, no-go, or what's the, what's the details within that?
I really, I, I think you're coming to a go or no-go decision in two weeks. You can go forward at that point in time and say, yes, we'll take the $4.9 million. Yes, we'll move forward on the project and put, put it into a final design mode. Or you say no at this time and submit for the intended use plan for 2019. But you have no guarantee that you will be on the 2019 plan, number one. And number two is, depending on what the schedule of that is, that's going to impact your ability in terms of putting the project together to get it out and into a bidding mode, so that you can then come along and say to Mass Works, we're not sitting on this money for the last two years, we are spending it. Because I think what some people are going to say about the Mass Works is there are probably about another 100-plus communities in Massachusetts that would love to take that money.
We're lucky we got that amount of money.
And put it.
We're lucky we got that amount of money. Very lucky. All right. I, I.
I'm sorry, Mr. Councilor, Council President. You had just mentioned that if we do move forward with this, it would necessitate an additional rate increase in the water bills.
Right.
What is the percentage of increase that you had just talked about there?
I said, I, no. 66 cents.
Out of, where is it now, so that we can kind of get a feel for what percentage change that would be?
1995.
So, approximately a 5% increase?
Right.
Additional 5% increase. So, as we kind of approach the, the go-no-go decision, I'd really like to see, you know, if, if that, those are the two options in front of us, what are the pros and cons associated with each option, just so we can visually have it in front of us, so we can explain to our constituents why we're choosing one of those options.
3.3% is the percent.
3.3%. Thank you, Mr. Press.
Could you do that for us?
Sure.
Prepare.
Yeah.
Two scenarios. I like the idea of having a, a special meeting. I'll entertain a motion to set up a special meeting.
Well, so moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. We'll set up a special meeting of the minds of this thing, and that's where we get the big bucks for making decisions. Okay, you guys can come back now that you took a break. You don't have to come to that meeting.
We'll invite.
We can make citizens comment.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the surplus old school buses. As you may know, the school department no longer has use of the three school buses that were donated by Viking Pride. They're going there in a different direction with outsourcing, et cetera. And we've got all of the proper legal details put together that's part of your package so that we can make a motion to surplus this property and get it back to Viking Pride so they can sell it and get some money for it. So, I'll entertain a motion. This was submitted by David Kressman, motion that the Town Council declare as surplus the following vehicles. A 2011 Thomas school bus, I'll give you the plate number instead of the VIN number for, you had this anyway, right?
Yeah.
Okay. SB 10421, that's a 2011 Thomas school bus. A 2012 Thomas school bus, plate number BU 19820. A 2014 Freightliner school bus, plate number BU 19734. All of these, the VIN numbers are in the motion, which is actually going to become part of the record. Do I hear a second? A second, a motion, a second? Second? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Rules and ordinances. A discussion of the CBD parking proposal. Are you, you prepared to talk about that today?
I can go over what we came out of in committee, but there is an ordinance that was sent out after the pack, it was sent out to all the members with the proposed ordinance on it.
Okay.
So, I can briefly go over what the committee came to, if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, sure. So, the committee, the committee met, I'd say, about three months ago, and. So, the committee, the committee met, I'd say, about three months ago, and it's, so it goes back about a year. We decided we wanted to have some type of a parking committee formed. We only got three applicants, so we decided to have like sort of a joint effort between the applicants who applied to be on the parking committee and the Economic Development Committee as well. So, the way that we wanted to tackle parking in the Center Business District first was by gathering information about, you know, what the business owners' concerns were down the center. So, we did a survey, and we also took data from the parking utilization study that took place last fall, and we decided that we wanted to tackle this problem in two phases. There's currently the issue in the center right now where the police are having issues enforcing the current codes because a lot of times the signs don't match up with what is on, is actually in the ordinance. And there's also an issue with business owners not being able to tell their employees where to park without having them be in violation of the parking ordinance. So, those were the two goals that we wanted to meet with this first pass. I know a lot of people have suggested that we have more in-depth parking strategies. But this pass was really just to formalize what's already been on the books for a long time and actually make it a little bit more loose than what we have on the books currently. So what we decided with on the first pass was really just to tackle on-street parking issues that business owners had. That was something that we saw that came through in the, in the surveys that we sent out very strongly, was on-street parking was not being enforced because of the lack of uniformity in the signs and in the ordinance. So, we decided to make a change from what in most instances was a one-hour parking limit to a three-hour parking and decided to have it throughout the entire, anywhere on a sidewalk in the Center Business District. The other part of this that we addressed in the ordinance is that there are residents who live in what I think most people would consider the Center Business District. So, what we did was we carved out resident exceptions for those individuals. There's about, I want to say about 15 or so houses where individuals live inside the zone that we wanted to really impact. And so, we took them out and said that through a exemption, through an exemption placard, they would not be beholden to the three-hour limit so that they would be able to park overnight and be able to maintain the same type of situation that they have currently. Because the goal of this was always along, was always to really just allow the police to be able to enforce rules that were currently on the books and to get employees into areas where they were confident that they could be able to park throughout the entire day. So there's language in there about town-owned, the town-owned municipal lots. So right now, there's a two-hour limit on all those lots that, you know, is clearly not the way the businesses were using them. They were telling their employees to park there. We're formalizing that with this recommendation. So, employees, business owners can tell their employees with confidence that this is where they're going to park and not have to be able to worry about any type of technical process. In the memo that I sent out to the, to the council, there are parameters showing where the, where the lines are going to start and stop. And also, we, the committee met with Deputy Chief Goodwin to sort of cash out a very, very remedial enforcement strategy for it. So the police are on board as well. There's also some, there's also, we also looked around on foot and saw areas where we're going to need to change the signage that doesn't currently match up, areas where we're going to need new signs, areas where we're going to need a new pole. And we also put into place a couple of 15-minute parking spots where MAPC had suggested previously that we have those, those spots in place. All along the, all along, we are hoping for an October 1 rollout of this. And I also wanted to just say before, you know, we get, that this is, there's still an opportunity to change any of these things through the committee process. If there's anybody who wants to have a conversation about this, who's watching on TV or in this room, there's still an opportunity to work on this if this doesn't quite work out for you. And I'm, you know, and I know that I'll be doing a lot of, you know, door-to-door with business owners, once we get an actual ordinance that comes out of rules, well, once we get something that I think that the council's comfortable with and that I'm more certain is going to pass in its current form. So that was what the committee came out with. I really want to thank Mike DiLuigi, who went above and beyond on helping me put together this ordinance. He did a really great job, as well as the committee members, aside from the Economic Development Committee, Jimmy Murray, Suzanne Martucci, and Julia Wallace. Everybody really came together, and I think that this is a great first pass at fixing the parking issue that at least business owners clearly felt was apparent, and hopefully we'll be able to address those issues that they have.
So Pete, this is going to rules and ordinances for their approval. Once the council ratifies this, is there going to be a, an informational-type period where people that are impacted are going to have an opportunity to know what the facts are so we don't end up with a problem like we did when they closed Tannen Road?
Yeah.
Not that I want to bring that up again.
What you said, the rules, we'll have at least two public carries on.
Yeah. I foresee a situation where we have some more meetings and rules and ordinances. And that's also why I wanted to make it an October 1 rollout, so that there would be a situation where we could inform business owners in the center about where we're moving to. And these changes are things that have been on the books for a long time, we're really just formalizing them and, you know, making them something that the police can enforce.
Councilman Raymond?
Yeah, thanks. I'll just add to that a little bit. I think that the goal here is to put into place a simple parking plan for the Center Business District that we can communicate clearly to residents with signage and that the police can enforce in a consistent manner. And that way, everybody will have a place to park where they need to park. I would recommend sort of a rollout period of maybe one month or two months where no tickets are issued but only a warning is issued, just so that everybody can get into the swing of, swing of things. And the signage in the center is really going to be key because right now, the signage is inconsistent or non-existent. So, we really can't do anything until we get the signage in place and a communication strategy.
Okay. Yes. Good idea. All is good. I would, I guess, think about whenever the rollout date is and if something is done in the center in June that would tear the center apart, I would try, I probably wouldn't order signs and put signs up right away and then tear everything down and, you know what I mean? And who knows what's going to happen, if anything's going to be done or not. But I would try to keep that in mind. You know, if there's going to be a major construction project that's going to, you know, you're going to spend whatever, a couple thousand bucks or whatever it is on new signs, then tear them down in three months, just to keep that in mind.
How many things do I have to mention?
Public comment, you can, Tom. Any other discussion? Any other councilors? No? Okay. So that's going to be, that's going to go to rules and ordinances. The next item under new business, the Regional School District Stabilization Fund, Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School. That's something that's, again, referred to finance. Transfer $60,000 to provide funding for the Belle Isle Marsh construction project, referred to finance as well. And finally, the new town manager contract was approved tonight. Our new town manager will start on the 20th of this year, or the 20th of this month, I should say. And his starting rate is $140,000 the first year, $145,000 the second, $150,000 the third. The complete, but the complete contract after it's signed is available for review by the general public at the town hall. So, public comment. I'm sorry.
Can we just make formal motions to refer those two to finance, please?
Okay.
I make a motion to refer a transfer of $60,000 to funding the Belle Isle Marsh construction project.
Motion. Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to refer to finance the discussion of the Regional School District Stabilization Fund for the vote.
Motion has been made, do I second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment? Please.
Diane Sands, Precinct 5, what's the, what's it supposed to say?
That's it.
Station, social security number.
Yeah. So, two questions. You do have Y and Z, right?
Yes, we're not changing Y and Z.
Okay. And the other thing, what were you talking about? Oh, what I was going to say, I think you addressed it though. What was the benefit of going for the $4 million? Is it, is it, is there less rate? Do we spend less? Is there a benefit?
Diane, that's all, this whole situation is about timing right now.
Okay.
Right now, we have financing lined up, we've got grants that have been approved, yet the project's on hold. So we have to make a determination whether we approve the project to start now.
Right.
Or put it on hold. We may lose funding, we may lose grants that we've already got. So this may, we may not be able to do something until 2020, 2021. So it's something that we have to...
I understand that the $4 million is a loan, but if you're going to lose grants, that's a big factor. I mean, so it's not my decision, but I do have a couple of questions. One was the answer, it was the audit, it was late. But they didn't say why it was late, did they? The audit? No? Because it was supposed to be in September, correct? I don't know.
No.
Yeah, it says that in the bylaws.
Well, I would generally say that most of the audits that I've been done dealing with, independent audits, are usually done by about February, the end of February.
So this is September?
I know, it was, it was not done when I arrived here, so I focused on getting it done.
Right. I just was wondering why it wasn't...
I think there's some information that they were waiting for.
Having sidetrack issues.
People...
Yeah. I realize that, which I'm going to ask as well. How many court cases do we still have going that we're paying for? No? Two?
I know of what, two?
Ah...
Three?
Three.
I think there's, there's, there's three that deal with what I would say, kind of the public officials' liability policies. And then I believe there's at least two that deal with board of appeals cases. I believe there's one that is a school department case, and there might be one other development-related type case, but...
So are we paying for attorney's fees, all foodies?
In most cases, the attorneys are paid for by the insurance company.
Most. And we pay interest as well?
Well, that, the interest is paid when you get into a judgment.
I thought it was on like a daily basis.
Well, when a judgment is, is reached, there can then be a charge of interest.
Yeah, okay. So, one has been, I thought one, it's been a judgment was reached about one of the offices that was waiting to go back to his job, et cetera.
Yeah.
You can't discuss.
We can't discuss. It's not going to be done in a session.
Just wondering if...
Will you tell you how many?
Yeah.
We can't discuss the cases?
Okay, I understand. But I just sort of didn't want to waste a lot of time with you either. Now, the other thing we discussed a while ago was that zero tolerance policy. And I was wondering if those advisors have come in yet? That you said they would have come in yet.
Not yet.
When did they come in?
When we get the new town manager seated.
Oh, he'll arrange it. Okay. The other question I was reading in the transcript about, you had made a comment that none of that was cut.
All of that, that's, that's, that's money that is appropriated every day, every year, special bills that are, that are put out by the speaker.
So...
And the chances of us getting that, maybe because it's an election year, we might be getting some of that money, but I wouldn't count on it at this point.
Because the pier is on. I didn't quite understand, a million dollars for public safety catches?
You'd have to call the speaker's office.
All right, I will do that. But I, I didn't know if that came to Winthrop or if it went to the MWRA.
I have no idea.
All right, I'll call. All right, that's basically it.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the public comment? Nope? Hearing none? The only thing we have under public relations is August 27th to the 31st is the next street sweeping. And also, on September 11th, there's going to be a forum on marijuana. It's a public forum, a town-wide forum, that we're going to hold to get public input on what direction the town needs to go in. That's going to be at 7:00 at the Neil Shapiro Auditorium on September 11th.
Also, Council President, I'm going to be having a Precinct 3 meeting on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 at the PSA Hall. I just arranged it, and I'll get it on the calendar soon.
Okay. Anyone else in the council?
We've had some excellent concerts down in Ingleside Park. Can I just ask what we have left coming up?
That's it, we did four.
We did four, we're done.
We did four, just yield it back a little bit. If you have...
All right, awesome.
If I can add one thing, Mr. President.
Sure.
You have a motion in front of you tonight against the Middle Field opening to the public.
Yes.
And I'll tell you, it's kind of going to drop a lot, and it's going well, it's been great, a big proponent of it. I'll tell you, it's going good. We're certain times are busier than others. With the heat, it hasn't been as busy the last couple of days, but we keeping data on as best we can. And I will tell you, it's been a great thing. And one of the commitments, since I was a big proponent of that field and pushed it with people, and I would like to see that keep rolling, open to the public at certain times. It don't want to get tougher during the school year with athletics, but they manage to get it done other times. We made a commitment to that, and I'd like to see us stick to that and help out in a way that we can to the public.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you want a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Good night.